Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order. Looks like we have anybody for public comment. So we'll move right on to the county administrative report.
Alright. So before you get to the item on your agenda, the Montgomery appeal on the Blodgett Trail.
Mm-hmm.
Katrina has a favor, but when you get to that, to the Montgomery appeal, all you need to do is approve the answers from Paul Gilchrist's that he has written out.
Okay.
And on the Travis Blodgett's motion that Paul has written out. He's filled it up to deny Travis Blodgett's motion because it was filed after Montgomery's appeal. And once an appeal has been received, it's in the court hands and it goes out of the jurisdiction of the SLIC board. So that would be the basis of denying it. But in reference to his concerns that the trail that's being discontinued is not on the plat, that's correct.
I know.
So Rob Townsend is putting it on, on the plat. It'll be a revised plat.
Okay.
So his concerns will be addressed anyway.
Well, that's good. Okay.
I don't think they're not charging. Rob isn't charging us for that, I think?
I would say he was not because it should've been on there.
Alright. Okay, well, that's good. Okay.
So those are the first two. The last thing is the... I did talk with the state a lot about getting a sign up by the mayor of Snapper and they're doing their traditional thing. They're doing a traffic investigation. Just to see if they still did it. I asked them to just put up a pedestrian sign and they have to go through the whole...
Like they have in Wakefield Phillips. I mean, I don't know if they went through the whole thing there, but...
Probably.
Yeah.
Dick Hoskin told me any signage that goes on the state rights of way, there needs to be approved by the traffic, be necessary, traffic investigation. And the same thing with Waterbury area or Little Oregon's, that's where I asked them to base their investigation on lots of new houses in that area and an increase in traffic.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's about all I have.
That's it?
I have the last one, but it'll come up later.
Ray, you got anything?
Uh, I didn't. Martin and I did meet with Henry Lewis.
Oh, good.
The driveway thing is really, it's really not a town issue. We made recommendations on what we would, we suggested was to put in some sort of temporary front of his garage and he was going to consider that. And then as far as the tree, so the tree, as you know, is dead. But it's not, even though it's in the right of way, I just don't feel like the town is obligated to take it down. There's no reason for us to take it down.
Is this a tree?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think there's any dead ones. I mean, there's three sick bastards. I think that's what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's sick or dead. One of them is... Anyway, don't feel like it's a road hazard or anything hazardous to town. I don't feel any responsibility or that we should pursue that. And I told him that. But I did tell him that, you know, I figured out the psych board if they thought different we'd go a different road, but, you know, there's a lot of, as you know, a lot of trees in the town, right of way that I don't think we should be responsible for every tree or else we'd be, we'd spend a lot of money on trees.
Yeah.
I mean, there are good trees until someone's taken down and then they go bad and then they're not their problem. If we have to come around and cut every tree before it got to be nice like a tree, then I don't think that's what we want, you know? My opinion anyways.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I listed it out to Martin to take a look at it and see what he thought in terms of the road.
Yeah.
There was another issue with Martin as far as another tree?
Yes, that's in your old business reports, reports of communication, is there? Did you talk about that tree with him too?
I did not look at that tree.
Yeah. He sent an email. He sent an email about it. So it's in your reports.
Anything else?
That's it?
Okay, count. Okay. Hello, O'Brien.
That's the tree.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. So this is from Charles and Georgia O'Brien. They're over on Cobb Hill. "We have concern of a large tree in front of our house on Cobb Hill Road. The tree is in the right of way for the road. The tree has lost several branches, two that of course extend to damage to electrical lines and loss of power, not only to our house but also our neighbors. Also has caused damage to our siding on our house. We're asking the psych board to please have the rest of the tree removed before more damage is done to our house and/or the neighborhood. Would you please have an answer concerning this matter? Thank you." Charles and Georgia O'Brien. So... Martin and I were back a little bit on this. Let's see.
That's an old one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's an old one, like the same decision from some house.
Right, 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 right.
It was in, I attached it later just so that you could see that someone asked if this had happened before.
Right, Jason wanted to...
Blodgett.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
So I took a look at the tree and the worst part that would have made it a road issue is gone. So the rest of the tree is leaning right at their house, but has absolutely no problem with the road. So unfortunately.
I don't know if you contacted the power, if it's a power company issue or whether they would do anything about it or not.
Yeah.
So he... Did Martin, did he...
Martin recommended doing nothing, that it wasn't on.
Okay, so Martin did not talk to, send any correspondence to the driveway or getting...
Yeah, he actually, Martin did respond, yeah, to all of us, which you saw. And he just said that he was aware of the tree. "Charles O'Brien has asked me about this tree numerous times. My answer to him has always been that he will have to involve the psych board on this tree. Appears that he has done his request that the tree is in question. In question is indeed in the right of way. However, there are a lot of trees in town in the right of way. I will not be making the decision on this tree. It will be an expensive take down and require a tree service to do so."
But no, he did respond to O'Brien's.
Okay, so we need to respond with a letter, I think?
Yeah, that letter that's attached is probably the same thing. Basically the letter that I'll use, the same that went to Blodgett, just to deny, yeah.
Right, right. Okay.
How long was that?
How long was it due on this one?
That was December 2012. Might, I would say in the letter it would be pretty much the joint opinion I saw from Martin. And this is from Isaac Kane. "Hello Cheryl, I feel silly that I never sent a note thanking you for this generosity. We have not resolved the issue and doubt that we will. Though we appreciate her offer tremendously, we will respectfully decline the offer of the town complete or amount of community service that comes up instead of this much of Isaac and Brian." And so that was where we were going to set aside $500.
That was a reward, right, given assumption?
Yeah, yeah. And from Steve Smith. "Hi Cheryl, this email is to inform you and the psych board that I have retired from the fire department as of tonight, date of July 17. I am leaving for personal reasons. I have spoken to both Stefan Pratt, Captain and Wellhope Hilton, First Assistant Chief about my departure. There will be a special meeting in-house to elect a new chief. So please call me if you wish." Okay, and then here's the letter from Dick Hoskin. And then from Mark Podgway of the Waterbury Ambulance. "Folks, as I'm sure you recall, Jim Hermanowski and I met with each of your town's psych boards on the end of 2017 and discussed general funding opportunities for WAASI. At that time, we all agreed to come back together in 2018 to discuss this further. It appears that time has come. I would like to propose a meeting, date, time of Tuesday, 4th of September at 1:00 PM at the Waterbury Ambulance Station. Please let me know if this works for you and if not, please propose an alternate date and time. Thank you. The time I look forward to a fruitful discussion. Mark."
You guys have a meeting that night?
Right.
Right. We'd like to propose an alternate date.
How about September 10th? The following Monday?
September 10th. You have a special meeting that night, so with the PC and DRB and zoning.
Oh, is that that night?
Add them to it as an alternate date.
Why don't they come that night?
No.
The night of the 4th.
What, what do you mean?
Or could we put it Monday again?
For the 4th.
Well, you could, but...
They wanted, they wanted a meeting.
They're having their meeting now.
Oh, that's DRB.
Right, yeah.
But at 1:00 PM.
Oh, yeah. I suppose we could, either the 4th or the 10th.
I couldn't do that. I couldn't do the whole office. But it'd be nice to have more of an agenda from them. Are they proposing some sort of budget increase, which I'm sure, or...
I don't know. We can ask them that. If you're proposing a per capita budget, you know, with the towns, is that what they're asking for?
Yeah.
Most of the time when, when they ask for services like that, it's on a per capita basis.
Right.
So if they could give us some more information, maybe we could talk about work. I don't know, maybe you can go to the media on the board, John, and whatever we could have. We could talk, put in a higher agenda for the board and talk about what they want to do and then maybe you can determine if we need to meet with them definitely.
Yeah, I could probably do that. Okay.
I don't know, I'm okay with you.
Yeah, I want to just find out what's going on. Yeah, okay. So just something...
So Waterbury Ambulance, what did they call themselves?
Yeah.
WASI. WASI, WASI.
Waterbury Ambulance Service. And then the information that I go convo to the owner, the chance to see that. I mean, a couple of other things. The stormwater management plan. Our next meeting is August 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:30 here. And to give you an idea... What we've been talking about, if you remember, we, there were 50 sites identified in Moretown, or actually, there were 54 total. And 43 have been completed by the crew and so there's 11 remaining. And so of those 11, we need to decide pretty much with five areas that are the most critical. So Martin, did you talk to Martin about it?
Martin was calling him.
Okay, yeah, okay. So if you have any input on that, if you have, Martin, I'd love to bring up it. You can, certainly welcome to come too.
Is there a draft of that plan in somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They'll probably have sent it to me. Could you send it again?
Yep. Want the updated one out to the meeting?
No, I'd like to look at it before the meeting. When is that meeting, John?
That's the 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:30.
August?
Yes.
And where will that be?
Here.
And that's Stormwater, the Council.
And we had our first finance committee meeting. Basically just an organizational meeting. Becky is actually the chair. And so they had requested as much information as we could supply on the budgetary process and, you know, the budget and, you know, where our overall funds are now and so on. And so between Cheryl and myself, we documented information, the rest of the committee. And we made again on 29th here at 9 o'clock. AM. And that's all I have. Anything else? Okay. Well, that's...
Good job, John. You covered a lot of...
Well, you know, I'm under the gun here for during the 7:15, so... Three hours. So Department is here, so...
How are you?
Hi, guys. Come on.
Do you really want to mark on it?
Uh, I think Steve just pulled it out.
Oh, okay.
Bring your chair up. Well, come right here. Don't stand.
Get, get comfortable. We're comfortable.
Can you guys sign in on that form?
Now, you want to give you more time until...
I guess Steve's a lot more worried.
Sit up!
John, you did your work off a real lot of it.
Go sit back here. Sure? Okay.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
How's it going, Steve?
Good, how are you? Good.
So we need to talk about, there to that, the budget and everything, as you know, it's over. And, you know, certainly, as we, the board has always said, we appreciate the service he gives to the town, but unfortunately, we do have, we do have budgets per department and we need to stick to those budgets. And so pretty much going forward, you know, if there's anything that you need, it's going to have to come out of your own fund.
Absolutely. You know, this is your first reason that we went over budgets so easily is we had unforeseen breakdowns of the equipment and that, that didn't help us out. And then there was the whole gear thing from when there was the gas spill. And we, you know, working through that. It can't all be foreseen, but we've certainly been trying to be as fervently as we can.
Who is the chief now?
It's kind of a, he's the chief on just dealing with the administrative stuff.
I'm the acting chief that we have our next election. That's what happens with.
Right.
Thanks.
And Sean, you're the officer?
Yes.
So... When you say equipment breakdown, what kind of...
We had one of our pumps, most recently, it blew a metal line in the back. We had it's a 98 truck and it finally just decided it was time to split the pipe so it was leaking water out. We couldn't keep the tank on the truck full. The primer blew apart on that same truck, so that was another. Though we didn't really foresee coming. And we did regular maintenance on them, which is what we budgeted for. So that pretty much brought us to our budget and then all the other breakdowns brought it completely over. It might be, you know, with the age of some of the trucks, it might be a safer time for some budget season to have a little bit more reserve and then for the unforeseen.
Right. You know, I think the psych board has always been pretty supportive of the fire department.
Absolutely.
I think it doesn't matter. Get in the budget and, and just if you can't budget or you can't foresee anything.
Absolutely.
Certainly, if we get it out there in the budget, we're all on the same page.
Absolutely.
Say, I don't know, a clutch replaced too?
Uh, we need to have that done.
We need to have that done.
Yes, we are trying to loop that truck through into the new budget.
What truck is that supposed on?
It's our tanker truck.
Tanker.
And, you know...
That's E3?
No, it's Tanker 1.
Tanker 1, good.
We were told by Jordan and, oh, I can't remember his name.
Glenn?
Glenn Johnson, that it needs to be replaced. It could go, the next time we take it out, or it may not go until we get it fixed. So we've just been trying to not take it anywhere unless we need to for an emergency. You know, we're doing trainings and stuff. We're not, we're not taking that truck out. It's putting extra wear and tear on it to try to get it through.
Is there an estimate on the repair for that?
Um, I don't know if you wrote up an estimate or not.
Is that what this, this is?
Part of that, those repairs on E1 down there.
Our E1?
There's repairs on three trucks, I think, on there. But the clutch is on your lower left hand corner.
Right, okay.
They did adjust the clutch to try to get it through.
They adjusted the clutch, okay.
To try to get it through.
Okay. So everybody, everything else on here is all what's itemized?
Yes.
So I still need a price for repair or a new clutch, I'm sure I can put something there.
Yeah, I've been working with him to try to figure it out and he was, we've been talking back and forth. And before it becomes time for budget numbers on the estimated cost of that so that we can try to budget that as well.
Any idea off the top of your head? 1,000, 2,000, 3,000?
I would say, I would say closer to 5,000 because they've got to take it to their shop. They've got to pull motor transmission apart and it's an older truck. So I don't know if things are going to come apart easy or not. But that would, I would say that would be a ballpark. I could be completely...
I'm pretty happy I have it.
You'd go behind on that?
That would be a hundred percent.
So we're going to want to get at least three bids?
Yep.
You're going to want to get Jane B. or, is that an Internacmo?
Yes, it is.
Jane B. and Clark's and Johnson or...
Yep, absolutely.
You don't need that for budget time, but you will before you fix it.
And, you know, just as we've offered to Steve in the past, you know, Cheryl is happy to help you with the books and everything.
Absolutely. I understand that. I think we'll, you know, continue to look at it and I think it's going to be more beneficial to us is I'm going to start a file at the fire station and then we know we have this much in the budget. We know we have these receipts for this month. And that should, you know, take care of the wonder of where, what we have left or what we don't have left or if we're over budget or not.
All right, and I understand that you aren't going to be here for more fest?
That would be correct.
Doing the corn now.
Doing the corn?
You know, we all usually get our corn from Nails. And kind of work on the street. It's, it's, it's not great this year. Plus a little weather thing, the barn collapsing.
Right.
Just wouldn't really look so, then come looking for a donation. I know he's probably wouldn't willing to do it, but with everything that's happened this year, we thought, we thought it would be best, you know, let's let it ride here and maybe next year come back.
Would you consider doing something else? Cooking something else?
I mean, you know, it's such a big part of the community, you know, it really, we'd really miss you.
Yeah.
You know, the whole town would miss having you guys there.
I mean, we'll be there for the fireworks because we have, we're supposed to have a truck on scene. We're doing those. But as far as like cooking stuff, probably not this year.
But we have, you know, an idea to kind of have something there. There's been some discussions. Some of the guys were interested in coming down. Was one of the trucks and kind of just having it, having it opened up and willing to...
That would be nice.
Yeah, like if that's a truck kind of thing, you know, maybe people will come, oh, what does the fire department do? And kind of show them what the equipment is and kind of what it, what it does, kind of a show and tell.
Yeah. Think you'd want to show off your new gear.
That's true as well, absolutely. Although it doesn't necessarily look so new. We've used it a little bit.
Well, that would be really good, I think, to tell a person. Have we requested the same thing from our highway department? Do they come down with a truck or a piece of equipment and park it here?
That's a very good idea.
Yeah.
Are you willing to eat pies, right? Cheryl's doing the pie contest. She wants to do the pie contest?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm trying, I'm going to be, I thought right now I have a flight that I can't seem to get to come back without costing a bunch of money. If that changes, I'll certainly be here.
I've heard that there's been, like, you're losing a lot of volunteers, you're not giving your volunteers like you would have been?
Um, we certainly have been feeling the national pain of, you know, volunteer fire departments. You know, members come... Members come, and, you know, they do what they can, and, you know, life changes, and they can't always help. We, we have a, a small crew, but a fairly decent crew right now. But we certainly have been doing a lot of ups and downs, and we can always use more people.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a problem that faces every single firefighter, volunteer firefighter in the country. You know, Warren, Waseville even, maybe not supposed to be at Waterbury, but there's outliers in every scenario. But, yeah, I mean, this is the way it is. I mean, there's a lot more things that occupy, you know, young guys' time these days. Cell phones, trucks, whatever. There's a lot more distractions out there, and coming down every Tuesday, every other Tuesday night and hanging out at the fire department isn't necessarily as cool as it used to be, so to speak.
Yeah.
So, it's, we got, like I said, we got some young guys, and that's, you know, kind of good and a bad thing. At the same time, you know, it's good to have the older timers that are, that are, have the experience, it can pass down their knowledge to the younger guys. But we need the younger guys there, too, to do the muscle work. But, yeah, I mean, we're always looking for more, and we've gotten a bit fortunate fairly recently to have, probably about four or five guys.
Yeah, one, one night, we ended up loading on five, five people, and that means they had come to the three consecutive meetings we had, and we loaded along one night, five, five, we had faced with.
Experience varies, I mean, there were a couple guys I had been on parts previously, and they're not living in the area, and then there's a few that are just fresh faces.
Do you have just Moretown guys on your crew?
No, we got some Duxbury guys, a couple guys who work in Waseville, or live in Waseville.
But it doesn't really affect anything, do they?
No, Waterbury has split coverage on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're doing better than some, but not as good as we could be, I don't think, but...
Can they help you advertise it all somehow? You put it on your website?
Maybe, and we have our Facebook page that we post on.
Yeah, but we can help you out with however...
We gotta sign, we gotta sign at the store, looking for members, but it's just what the design is.
I just found a new way to mail things, super, super cheap. The, um, post office let me know about it, and it literally just goes to, um, every single address.
Every order, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've used it before.
Have you used it before? Because that's really, that's not very expensive to send a card out, right? Have you guys done that before?
Yeah, but not for the fire department.
Yeah.
I have a work, depending on where you send it, and definitely, but I mean, it's not printing everything.
Yeah.
The postage, it can, it can be a little, a little expensive.
Yeah.
Most things I get like that, it's kind of awesome, it's like... Bill, bill. But, it is, it's something to look into.
Do you have anything else you wanted to talk about?
Um, so I've been doing a little bit more research from when we spoke last about how Waterbury gets just over a hundred thousand dollars from Duxbury for fire coverage, and we get three thousand. It's an interesting concept, because looking at the majority base of their, their population, it's in our coverage area, actually, versus Waterbury's. They have a more spread out coverage area, but it's less people than the area we cover. So I, I found that a little bit interesting upon looking at it, and I'm gonna be meeting with the select board of Duxbury come budget season, because there's been some interest from them to talk to us and get numbers of what we've done for calls in Duxbury to figure out, you know, if, if the money is, is proper or needs to change a little bit. So it's just something that, you know, I've been looking at, because it's, it's a way for us to bring in a little bit more money to help with the budgeting of the fire department.
Sure, yeah. So it sounds like they're receptive.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, that's good.
So you're gonna be working on per capita? So you have a standard go-by, maybe, instead of just a flat fee that what we've been getting for all these years?
That's actually a really good idea. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that or looked into it, but that's a really good idea.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that recovery does pretty well.
Good, good. Well, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
When's your actual?
The election.
Election.
August twenty-first. I only did it that far out to make sure I warned everybody in the fire department properly, so we had plenty of time to plan for the amount.
Well, I've been in here, too, so I don't know.
And thank you, Steve, for all the years you've done this in the past. Thank you. Appreciate it. All the years you did that.
You look very well rested.
I am.
I have to say.
I am good with this, you know, I'm terrible, I mean, it's been a big part of my life for most of my...
How many years were you at the job?
Uh, as chief, I was five years. And I've been doing it for twenty-two, so I think it was time for a break and...
Yeah.
Step back and kind of enjoy my free time.
And he's made it pretty easy for us, as far as me with the paperwork stuff. He pretty much already had me doing most of that stuff, but if I have any questions, it's not like he's done and gone. He still answers his phone for me, so I can ask him the silly little question about this, that, or the other thing. So it's kind of a decent transition thus far.
Yeah.
You can always call, you can always call me, too, if you have a question of, you know, something that you don't know with Steve, so... I'm here, I support you if you need anything, and you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all of it.
Cool. Well, that's easy.
Great.
University.
You have the, uh... The machines.
They're online.
Excellent. Okay.
See you on there. I think you do seven fifteen.
What's that?
I think you do seven fifteen. You're getting there. Here's all the papers to do. Old business. There's two different sets there.
Okay, so, old business.
I think we probably have more copies than what you need. One?
Yeah, I had a couple copies, yes, too.
Just somebody who designed the little ones, just a motion, huh? Um, where's your little sticky note? My little sticky note is the response to motion to reopen and alter is at the top. That's for Travis Blodgett.
Okay.
For the board to sign and date. Denying the motion to attend, to amend or alter, because it's based on the fact that you no longer have jurisdiction to do so.
Okay.
And the second piece of paper, are the answers to the questions raised by Montgomery Timber, all answered. And by signing that, you have... I don't think you're signature page, I think it's a motion, isn't it? Right, that's just... Yeah. You want us to...
Uh, okay, so, let's see. The general allegations, Montgomery Timber Company has plaintiff is in Hampshire Limited liability with offices in principal place of business in Springfield, Hampshire. So that's admitted. Plaintiff owns property in town of Moretown. Conveyed to plaintiff by warranty deed of Claritha Lathir Bandmill, dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. Number three, defendant town of Moretown, here in the town municipal corporation of Washington County in the state of Vermont. Four, defendants Calvin and Nancy Bladger, the residents of the town, and own property in the town at five six five nine Moretown Mountain Road. Defendant Travis Blodgett is a resident, owns property in town at five seven one one Moretown Mountain Road. And defendant Kathleen Skolitz is a resident of East Montpelier, address of two one five five zero fourteen. And owns property in this town. Number five, plaintiff sole access to plaintiff's property is a trail. This trail is depicted as legal trail seventeen on exhibit A attached in July's twenty sixteen Vermont general highway map of the town and Baywatch Agency of Transportation. And that was denied. Plaintiff has a historic access likely obtained by prescription to its property. The historic access was that part of Travis's property. And, now, everything else is admitted, and, let's see.
You guys have what, thirteen?
And not, and not, nine. I'm surprised that something wasn't brought up on nine, because it's, it's really describing that historic crossing.
It addresses that number thirteen.
Oh, okay.
It addresses it in number five, that's why it was denied. Plaintiff's...
Oh, okay, okay, so it is number five, okay. And thirteen, said the select board decision purports to discontinue the trail as it leaves Moretown Mountain Road, crosses Cockbrook, and extends to the Skolitz camp. Uh, so the, uh, select board decision purports on its face to discontinue a portion of town trail number seventeen as far as the cabin shown on town survey, a land now formerly of Kathleen Skolitz. And it's denied and does not report, it discontinues. Likewise, same thing in fourteen. We have laid it out, and then fifteen, admitted as to facts, legal conclusions are undiversable. And that's pursuant to nineteen VSA seven forty A. Plaintiff has appealed the select board decision, and, uh, in section seven forty A, provides when a person owning or interested in lands to which a highway is laid are out altered or resurfaced by select board members, objects to the necessity of taking the land or is dissatisfied with the laying out, altering, or resurfacing of the highway, or with the compensation for damages. Here she may appeal in accordance with rule seventy-four of Vermont Rules of Civil Procedure to the Superior Court in the same county. Sixteen seventeen eighteen is denied. And that's because sixteen said the plaintiff and his predecessor, Claire Lathir Bandmill, since nineteen ninety-one, had used town trail seventeen for logging purposes in general access, which they had not. Proposed trail relocation is unusable for access to the plaintiff's property because of steepness of grade, lack of turning radius, necessity for installing bridge improvements in town highway, and safety issues. And that was denied, and then, the discontinuance of town trail seventeen as far as Skolitz camp will discontinue plaintiff's sole means of access to plaintiff's property, resulting in plaintiff retaining a private right of way over the portion of town trail number seventeen. Discontinuation necessary for access to the plaintiff's property, and that was denied. Under relief requested, plaintiff requests the following relief. At the court, the judge and declare select board decision null and void the lack of jurisdiction, that nineteen VSA seven oh eight A and seven oh nine do not authorize the discontinuance of trails. And defendant opposes a claim that a town cannot discontinue a trail. And two, court, the judge, and declare the town trail seventeen is a trail as defined, a public right of way which is not a highway, three rods in width, and...
Did you have that again?
That one is, that the court...
That's number two, right?
That's number two, right. That the court, the judge, and declare the town trail number seventeen is a trail as defined nineteen VSA three oh eight A eight. A public right of way which is not a highway, three rods in width. So why would we oppose that?
Because of the three-rod thing?
I was, yeah, I think of the three-rod thing.
What question?
Or, or... No, no, because, because, I would imagine it's because they keep referring to town trail seventeen as being the historic access, so that's probably why.
Historic in their use of it, they say, but that's what they keep referring to as.
I mean, they refer to that thing... Keep referring to it as, as where Lathir went over.
Not where, you know, not where the trail is found by...
As found by Townsend.
As found by Townsend, and then used.
No, no.
Court, the judge, and declare the town trail number seventeen is a trail as defined nineteen VSA three oh one, which is not a highway. So, I get it. So the defendant, we are opposing that the judge claimed...
That it's a trail.
That they, um, Montgomery wants the judge to claim that trail seventeen is a public right of way, three rods in width.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah. Because we're, um, because we're saying two rods is what the...
We're saying two rods, and that it's a trail, and he wants him to say that it's a public...
Public right of way, right, okay.
Now, a trail as defined, as defined, uh, as defined by the statute is not a public highway. It's a trail with no motorized vehicles. So he wants to be able to have motorized vehicles on it.
Right, right. Okay. Follow that? Agreed?
Sort of.
You know, I guess, I would, I, uh, so he'll just keep those of these doing.
You know, if a lawyer talked to me-
Right, right.
I can't, you know, do all the research, but he wants to know, and so he knows what he wants to say.
Right.
What he's saying there is, it's not a highway, it's a trail with no motorized vehicles. Which basically is, is the ordinance that they wanted you to pass in the beginning.
Number three is alternatively, if the court determines that the select board decision properly discontinued the segment of town trail number 17 as it leaves Moretown Mountain Road, crosses Cox Brook, and extends to the Skolitz camp, or that the same other way is no longer constitutes a town trail, then the court, a judge, and declare that plaintiff has a private right of way, three rods in width, over the segment of town trail number 17 discontinued for access to the plaintiff's property. And defendant is not involved in a claim for private right of way over private property. And four, by way of further alternative relief, if the court determines that plaintiff does not have the right to use the segment of town trail number 17 discontinued either as a legal trail or by such private right of way, then the court, a judge, and declare that plaintiff has a prescriptive right to use such segment for access to plaintiff's property. Once again, defendant is not involved in any claim of prescription over private property.
What that says is, if he wants to claim, he's asking the judge to claim that if the select board turned this down, he can use it.
Exactly, right.
Which is not something he should be doing in this fight, but-
Five, that defendants Blodgett's be ordered to remove any of their improvements on approach on town trail 17, or any part allegedly discontinued, or on any plaintiff's private right of way. Defendant approves consolidation of the appeal and the civil action. I'll follow that. They're going to remove improvements.
Defendants, so this is, doesn't have anything to do with the town. This is the Blodgets. He named the town and the Blodgets.
Right, okay.
So you're saying that, that you're okay with the consolidation of the appeal, and then their civil action against Blodgett.
Uh huh, okay.
It's a way to look at it.
Yeah, that sounds good. And six, that this matter be consolidated with plaintiff's appeal. And defendant agrees that any relief, relief be just and equitable.
So we combine six and seven now.
What's that?
He combined six, he combined five and six.
Five and six?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Not one just needs a motion.
So I will, I will move that we accept the answer prepared by Paul Gillis. Any more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the one we signed, response to motion to reopen or alter by motion dated July 13, 2018, Travis Blodgett by counsel filed a motion to alter or amend the decision made on June 18, 2018 by the select board. Hey, Jason. Whether a motion to amend or alter is available in a highway hearing is an uncharted question as no statute authorizes this procedure, but if such a motion were proper, it cannot be heard, given the recent appeal of this matter by Montgomery Timber Company, LLC. The select board no longer has jurisdiction of this matter, consequently, it denies the motion to amend or alter.
Who will you sit there and respond?
Okay. Any discussion about this is, yeah, that's what we're discussing right now.
This was written by Paul?
Yes.
Does anyone know what the uncharted question is?
Yeah.
Is that the, on the mylar that Townsend approved, that the trail that's being discontinued is not on that mylar?
Mm-hmm.
And that is true.
Mm-hmm.
And Rob Townsend is providing an amended mylar. So, in a sense, when, as soon as Montgomery filed the appeal to the court-
Right.
It took all matters regarding that out of the jurisdiction of the select board. So that's what, that's what that paper says, that the select board is denying this only for the fact that they don't have the jurisdiction to afford it.
I was just asking for the meaning of the phrase, "uncharted question." I don't know what that means. But yes, to everything you said, but I just don't know what that means. Anybody?
Something that's been done before.
Well, we can look at, or, we can look at, I read this so long ago that-
That's, that's-
This is from-
Cali, that makes sense because it says-
Statute to go back on.
Right, because I know statute authorizes this procedure, but if such a motion were proper, it cannot be heard. Because of the recent appeal.
I would understand that if the town had a charter. I just don't understand the legal meaning of that. But I think overall, it says what you said, but there is a term here I don't understand. Nor does anyone else.
I guess I just interpreted it as something to do with, the question has not been asked previously, and then the procedure, we couldn't find any record of it.
Sounds reasonable, yeah.
That's the way I read it.
The motion is still open.
Any more discussion? All in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question on old business, and could move on to something else there, Tom?
Yeah, go ahead. For old business, Tom.
Yeah, I was only wondering where we stood on this, this sidewalk and the, I thought we were going to have this help forbid this summer, but-
I asked Pat Trevers last week to have a report for tonight. We don't have that report. He was going to do that today, but they had some, someone injured in their business that was dealing with West Burke, so he had to go there today. So where it stands is Director Carl sold his property. John and Pat are going to get together the week of the 20th and visit the new owners for an easement.
So we didn't have an easement before he sold it?
We did not have an easement before he sold it. I have been pushing.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we had an easement.
Well, we did until the state came along and said as far as catch basin go, that we needed to change that catch basin over there. So that's just something new.
Oh, okay.
When they were doing the plans that went into the state, the state said we need, we need to, an easement to change that because we can't find one that we have in the state.
Yeah.
And that was probably two weeks ago. Maybe not that long.
Okay, sure.
Doug is ready to go. As soon as that easement, as soon as we have that easement, I feel the state will have a permit, 1111 permit from the state as soon as we have that easement. We have all the other easements.
So it's highly unlikely it's going to be built this year.
Probably not. Which is a pretty big disappointment to me. I mean, we worked hard on getting all those other easements.
Yeah, seems like it just, nobody wants to get it done. It just keeps on, not us, but the engineering or the state, it just keeps on moving backwards.
Unfortunately so.
But, okay, that's the update.
Any other old business?
I have one.
Okay.
The town hall mold. I checked CBT contractions references, and they were all wonderful. One person I spoke to, he built their whole house. It wasn't a small job. Then, so we have, the other thing is, we have a bunch of the leftover cabinet faces because they're not going to be used. And when they did all the cleaning, everything got put into a big pile in the middle of the room. And as I'm putting it all away, a lot of it is junk that needs to be thrown away. There is an old bulletin board that's garbage, there's a bunch of random construction debris, there's old vents that have just been piling and piling up. So our dumpster doesn't take that kind of stuff. So I had A&amp;J Recycling, our local business, come down and give me a price to take it all away. And for him to go in, get it out of the belly, and take it away would be $200. It would cost us, I think, more for the guys and their time with the truck and taking it to them. So I was asking for permission to have him do that.
I'll make that motion. Go ahead and have, what was it?
A&amp;J Recycling.
A&amp;J Recycling. Remove the construction and other debris from the town hall for 300 and-
200.
200 dollars.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye, okay.
I have my old business. I have steam business.
Were you expecting workups?
In case you have questions about the survey, right?
So, yeah, so we had meeting yesterday, and we looked at the-
Not fully.
Yeah, we looked at the agenda and saw that we were on it. So we thought we should have. And that's a few other things I want to do. Were you expecting us, or were you just going to discuss it?
We were just giving them the survey.
Oh, giving it to them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was all.
We have so much more to give.
Well, we gave them the survey like a week ago. Yeah. I had a chance to read it, so it's good that you're here in case they have questions.
So I have copies of the survey. I also have a timeline. We have now developed a timeline-
Good.
-for the project. And we have some things to follow up, if people like to see a copy. Where's Tom too?
Either way.
Someplace nice, an ocean. Jessica, go up in the hospital.
They're copying these.
Very short, too.
So, we're already past early July. We came up with, we have a subcommittee, that is the Community Outreach Committee, that came up with this particular survey, which is called the Ask Questionnaire. There is people who are associated with the library, trustees, employees, volunteers, friends of the library have been asked to just take this out to the community, talk to people face to face, get the ideas about, you know, what they're thinking, what they're like. It starts out with, what do you like about Moretown, and really how to make the library a more vibrant part of the town. Also gives us the chance to introduce the reasons it would be good to move into the town hall and not, and reassure people that they won't be losing their town hall. So that's happening, and then we are going to, there we are, there we are right now on August 6th at the select board. August 13th, they're going to be developing an online survey, which is going to be more of a nuts and bolts kind of survey, like, would you like this? Would you like that? Do you want, you know, not as open-ended questions as the survey that we have here. So we're going to have two kinds of surveys going on, trying to get more information about community needs and wants. We're going to, in September, also identify resources and stakeholders from conversations, meet with some key groups, the select board who are one of the stakeholders, and come back to that, that we would, Cory would like some time to meet with you all. By the end of September, we're hoping to, we're hoping to have, maybe gather some, have some surveys at Morefest, be able to talk to people then, and then from Morefest until then in September, collate the data. In the beginning of October, we received a lovely gift. Cory went to a library, I don't know what conference, and there were some door prizes, and Waterbury won this prize to have Library of Design come and do some consultation. But since they had just redone their library, they didn't need it, so they gave it to us. So they're going to come and talk to Cory, and she's going to use the information we get from the surveys to talk about a vision and get some feedback from them. November, we are thinking that that's budget time. Which meeting is, when do you, is it like, do you usually have a second Monday of the month special meeting for budget?
Not usually until they're ready to pack it up. So I'm going to be asking for budgets probably by the 15th of October.
Okay.
Ooh, October.
October?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it starts then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that may change our plan.
15th October, okay.
That gives, and the reason for that is, it gives time for if people with departments want to come in and explain their budgets. You can do that in November, you know, okay.
But then there, isn't there like one meeting where the, or is there more than one meeting where the, the select board discusses the budget and finalizes that?
Continuing that meeting. Continuing, there will be a meeting, a little portion here, a portion there.
So then in January, we will be having some things in the Town Report, kind of describing our year as always, but also the progress and the plans for the future with this move. And then we had a lot of discussion and wanted to ask more about this. So we think that Town Meeting is a day that we're shooting for something to happen. We aren't quite sure what you're, you all are thinking is gonna happen on that day. So are you thinking we're gonna give a presentation about what our hopes and plans are and just get general feedback from Town Meeting? Do you think there's gonna be a vote of some sort? An article that day that's voted on from the floor? An article that's on the ballot? Would it be a yes or no, we should do this? Would it be a budget line item? So we're just wondering, what should we be planning for to happen on Town Meeting Day?
You're gonna have a budget, you're gonna have a budget and idea of a design?
Yes.
So I would love to see a design at Town Meeting.
As a presentation?
Yep, to bring to the people.
As a, well, as a possible design along with an open discussion.
Yeah, open discussion. Because of literature.
Yeah. But open discussion with your input because you've put a lot of thought into this already.
Right. Because...
Nothing beyond that at this point.
Well, I'm just thinking, when I hear design, we're gonna have to pay somebody for that design.
No, we gotta get it for now.
Yeah, that gives me my next question.
Black River Design.
Black River has now given us this, does that mean we're gonna go with Black River?
It doesn't. We'll have to see what we hear.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see more than just one architect, even though they're, you know, not that it's Black River Design, do a lot of work with them, but there are a lot of architects and even though they're offering a free consultation, I don't think that commits us to them at that point.
No, no.
And, you know, that's fine, we can listen to them.
I think that we're thinking that's a starting point.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine.
At this point, we're just talking about a basis for discussion. Here's what this architect came up with. Here are some other thoughts.
Yes.
What does everybody think? And that's it. So we're not paying anybody to go do anything yet. This is funding, as we think.
So like, are we thinking that we might have two separate budgets? Like one just our general usual yearly operating budget and then one that would be possible move budget? Or would we have all one?
No, I think you have to give them.
Okay, okay. Yeah, see, we need this information to make a, do what we need to do.
Doesn't mean you can't combine them within, but you'll wanna spread it.
Break it out, yeah, yeah. Okay. Before we, Jen, did you wanna add anything to my explanation of the timeline?
Oh, no, I think that by, we kinda did this like backwards design thinking where we were thinking, well, at Town Meeting, what needs to happen ahead of time so that we would be prepared? So it sounds like being prepared with the design and the presentation. That design would have the input of the consultation in addition to two design nights, which would invite the community involvement.
And the budget. We don't wanna know budget.
And the budget as well.
For the design of, for this particular design. Your design, even if you have a different designer, your budget's not gonna be that much different.
Sure.
Budget might be different by the cost of the bids that come in from the design company. And that's gonna be part of your budget to hiring a designer if you have to.
I think one of the things that would be very helpful would be to know the as-is budget and not only the one-time budget for making the change, but what the ongoing operating budget would be.
Once we move, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, and we have talked about, we've talked about that in broad terms, not too specific yet, but yes.
And since we don't know exactly what you're doing yet, it's very hard to have an operating budget for it. And we understand that, just, you know, think in those terms and tell what you can.
And then the idea would be the presentation and the open discussion at Town Meeting with the budget details.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, so I wanna go back to one of the things I said in September. It says identify resources and stakeholders. Cory would like you to think about maybe setting some time aside to meet with her, whether it's in here at a regular meeting or if it's a special meeting or maybe it's at the library or maybe it's at the town hall. That might be conducive. But she would really like to get an, not a long meeting, she said 15 to 20 minutes, but she would like to get an idea as the Select Board, as the primary stakeholders, what are your goals for the library? What are your goals for us moving? What are your goals, you know, why you have these goals? So she would just like to get some more information.
It's gonna be hard to get the goals until you've got some budget, I would think.
Well, I don't think, we didn't have a budget when the, when the idea started. So maybe just talk about the idea itself.
I'm okay with discussing goals before money. And you may find out we can't afford your goals, which, you know, is one possible outcome.
Well, that's a chance to take by talking about the goals before they happen.
That's right.
I mean, that's a chance that you're taking.
And we did have the initial budget that you worked up.
Yes, 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 we do have some.
So if that's changed?
Not, not yet. That will change until we get our survey results back and the design date that we have. So should Cory...
Also in September with the stakeholders, the Historical Society has been active in...
They're on my list. I don't log this, John. I always have a list. So anyway, I just wanna finish up that point about Cory wanting to meet. How would you think would be the best way to do that? Have a special time to meet with her, have her come to a regular meeting? Have her come to a regular meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be nice, yeah.
Have her contact you, you contact her, or what?
Why don't you have her send me an email?
Okay.
Requesting, requesting to come in probably the 17th of September. She wants you September.
Okay.
Or would it be better to have it perform Morfest? Does it really matter?
I don't think so.
We had September open for that, so we wanted to offer a festival.
This is gonna be more of the same thing of getting results and working on designs based on needs and desires in the community. So the 17th would be a good date for that because that's only two days afterward. Yeah, I think it's a good time. So, okay.
Should we have that meeting at the town hall? Just to, you know...
You could always walk over if you wanted to, I suppose.
It could be at the town hall.
Yeah, yeah. We'd have a meeting at the town hall.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
It could be right there if we, you know, we're all talking, we can, I think it'd be a lot easier to...
I have a question on the survey.
Yes.
Where, maybe a question for the survey, just because I hate to look at marketing opportunities so bad.
Okay.
What do you think of adding a question about, would you consider using the town hall facilities? And see what people said?
You mean the way they are now? The way people use it now?
Let's elaborate, what else along those lines could that question say?
Like, how would you consider using the town hall?
Yes.
Or have you ever used the town hall? Would you consider using it again? That might tell you whether they have and it might tell you what's missing.
Yes, what use would you like to make of it in the future?
Okay, good.
That's great.
That could also be...
That'll be in the following survey.
Yeah, exactly. We got more surveys coming, so it's not too late. So let's look at my list here.
As long as you're happy to talk to people, maybe they'll get some business out of it.
Okay, anymore, I haven't, so I don't have any more items on my list. I wanted to mention any more questions about the timeline or the survey before I move on?
No.
So my next question is, I would like to get a, I wanna put this. I would like to make it clear that we've talked about, we're working on title search for that building and the little bit of land that it's on. And it looks like, from what I've heard so far, we should be able to sell it. I would like to know if the Select Board is committed to letting the library trustees keep, spend that money, whatever money could be possibly raised on the library improvements for the town hall? If we were going ahead and making plans and thinking we'd have some income and then you said, well, we'd like that to go into the general fund, that would be...
So we would need to know that.
Yeah, we need to know that. So I wondered if we could just make it formal? Do you all agree? Do you, have you not thought about that?
I didn't think we even had jurisdiction. I think that's your library's property.
Whatever trustee's property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what I was gonna say. It depends on how the deed is written.
Yes.
If it's steed to the library.
It is. But I didn't know, because we were now municipal, if you would feel like that was gonna change anything. So you are all committed to that, you don't feel like you...
I don't see that the question comes up.
Okay. I like that answer.
The library is committed to using the proceeds from the property to help pay for...
Yes, should we sell it? That's what we would definitely, because we want something...
Something that we would.
Yes, we want something nice and functional that's gonna be a, you know, a great place for the town, the town as a library. And there are, you know, many things that a library can be, but also we wanna design it so that people can still use it and have their town hall. So, yeah, so that would really help. Okay, excellent.
That's the part I'm still waiting for, you know, to see how that can be done.
Yes, we're getting there. We're gonna do our best. All right. We wondered, so we read that the kitchen was being redone. And we didn't know if, it sounds like maybe it's too late for us to have any... We were thinking if we were moving into that building, maybe we would be part of that conversation of what was going to be done in terms of the kitchen.
The kitchen is not, it's not really done.
There was mold issue.
Right, well, we knew that, but then aren't there, so there's not like any redesign going on in the kitchen?
Just gonna go back together.
Oh, right then. That answers that question.
Thank you.
So the kitchen is all back together now?
No, the cabinets were three weeks out when we ordered them last week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The last thing I wanted to talk about, you brought up before, John, the Historical Society. We have reached out to them. They have participated in the Community Outreach Subcommittee. We have two subcommittees going now. We've got the Community Engagement, I said Community Outreach earlier, it's called Community Engagement. And we've got the Subcommittee of Trustees that meet every other month when we don't have a regular meeting to discuss the move. We could very well, don't we have a third, do we have another Subcommittee?
For the High Marine of the Assistant.
Oh, that's, yes, that's correct. So we have invited the Historical Society to our meetings and really reached out to them, invited them to come along to the town hall with us. They're still not, they're still somewhat lukewarm with that idea, as far as I can tell. And I, we sort of feel like the library has been put in the middle of this between the Historical Society and the Select Board. It was the Select Board's idea for us to move and you contacted us, but nobody contacted the Select Board, the Historical Society, although you're on it, right? Right? You're part of it. So the plan was, as far as we understood it, for the town to save money by having one less building. But if the Historical Society stays in there, that doesn't save any money. So we're just wondering, what are you all thinking about in terms of the Historical Society and maybe reaching out to them from the Select Board? Or maybe you feel like you've already done that? I don't know.
I guess I don't have the exact answer. I think the Historical Society was hoping that they could, they were gonna have that building if it moved. But I don't know if that was a Select Board intention, that that building would stay if it moved. I don't think it was.
I don't think that that's really a decision that we've made. And I think that there's information that will be needed before we can make that decision. Namely, what is the marketability of that building? I suspect we're gonna find out that we're not gonna be swimming in high-dollar offers for that building.
I think the, I think the Historical Society is most concerned about maintaining the historical part of that building, the town hall perspective of it.
You think that's more of a concern than possibly vacating the library?
I think so. I think they want to maintain that.
Well, that's good for us to know in our planning. Because that was not the, I don't think that's been really on our radar. We've been more focused on them not wanting to leave the building or if they're in that.
There, I mean, there is concern that there is, what are they gonna do with their, all their stuff? You know, and talents are gonna be displayed or kept in the town. Where is it kept? We haven't addressed that.
How often do you meet?
They, and I don't get to have a meeting. They usually meet at least once a month.
So I'm worried that downtown, more of a concern because of the curtains and things, right?
The curtain is one thing.
Roughly, how much does that building cost a year? Can anybody remember?
Which one?
The library?
The current library.
Not much. It heats very inexpensively, the tower is very inexpensive.
So we're having it that much and there's not that much going on in there.
I'm thinking that if we want to retain some of that space for the Historical Society and we're currently paying for storage in Weinsfield, that may be a way to save some costs.
Would definitely be a way of saving some costs if, you know, what, if the library trustees would approve that.
Of course.
So it's gonna need to know how much it would sell for, if it's worth the benefit of...
The assumption, the assumption there is we don't get good offers.
Yeah.
I already had somebody tell me, when you said, if you guys sell that, let me know, right? We'll all buy it.
Wow.
Now, whether it actually happened, you know, talk is cheap. But I said, I don't know, who would want, go in there, you know, there's no bathroom. And she's like, I think this person, I think a lot of people would like that. I, maybe we should put that on our timeline. Yep, the real estate exploration. But I guess what I'm wondering, back to my original point, is if maybe the Historical, uh, the Select Board would like to reach out to the Historical Society a little more. I think that covers it.
That's it.
You have a little list there, didn't you?
I always have a list. That's me. Any more questions for us?
No.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
So when is your, when is your next meeting?
Our next regular meeting is August 13th, is that right, Jen?
The Committee Enga, Community Engagement, we're meeting tomorrow, the 7th. The Committee Enga-, Community Engagement, we're meeting tomorrow, the 7th, the 13th.
That's something. So the regular, okay, so the Community Engagement Subcommittee tomorrow. Regular trustees' meeting, August 13th.
So what time, what do you think we are, and what time is that?
That will be at the library from 7:00 to 8:30.
You guys are late now.
Well, I want, I'm, I actually just mentioned this, like, maybe we could meet earlier because I'm often in bed at 8:00, so I would like to, I would like to start a little earlier.
So if...
But at this time, as far as I know, it will be 7:00 to 8:30. That's because the library's closed at that point, but in the old days, we used to, maybe here was, now I'm gonna be here with all the trustees. We used to meet in the library when the library was open and if people came in, they could look for a book or they could join in the meeting.
So if I could talk to the knees and, um, the Historical Society and get them to come to this meeting and try to find some common ground and goals, would that, would that do anything? Or are you, are you looking for, to bring the Historical Society in, into the Select Board next meeting? John, what do you, what do you, which way do you think we should be going with this?
I have the... I, yeah, I would think that they would be, you know, at the next meeting.
Next Select Board meeting?
I have the impression that they felt maybe that a step was skipped and not, like, the Select Board spoke to us but didn't speak to them.
I don't know.
I don't know either, but let's just say, yeah, yes, but after the process started.
When you say after the process started, after they were in here the last night, right?
No, no, I mean after we started.
Oh, oh, okay.
Talking about the move and...
I think initially, they felt that some decisions had been made without them, which I think there now clears not the case. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's right.
They, I think that they thought the project was going faster than what it really was. That they were here and things were, that it was a definite thing that was gonna happen. And in fact, we still don't even know what's gonna happen, right?
Yes, yes.
And I believe their main concern is that there's not gonna be multi-use buildings. See, that's not one concern.
That's it. It's been a community building, community center.
And I, I think it's accurate to say that we're insisting on the multi-use buildings, that...
Are you speaking of current interactions with them or? I'm just saying that I feel like, like, it seems like we're pushing, I felt like, they felt like we are pushing them out. Feel like that's true. I feel like we were just trying to do what we were asked, what was best for the town, what was best for the library.
But currently, are they still having these conversations since they've met with the Select Board? We haven't really... My last one was at the Community Engagement and it was just around what kinds of questions do you want?
Yes, we haven't really had a discussion.
So maybe they were fine when they last spoke to you.
But so maybe I'm just being oversensitive, but... But I just wanna make sure.
I'll make a point to try and get this.
Yes, and if, if anybody wants, if you wanna come to our meeting, just let me know. I'll put it on the agenda.
Yep, I will.
Beautiful.
I'll let you know in a minute.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks for your time.
Good, okay. Thanks for coming in. That's the only reason you come in here.
Yeah, the rolling chairs, isn't it?
Sorry, I missed the timer before.
No, can I...
What's that?
I think there's a question back here.
Can I, can I, because of the timeline?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, back to, let's finish new business and then we'll take care of the rest. So, Bow and Ward Repair.
Yes, they're in bad shape.
I know, I've been meaning to bring that up for months, that we need to do something.
So what do we wanna do? Do we want to take them down? Except for the one that's designated as a posting place on Cobb Hill? Or do we wanna fix them? The one on Jones Brook and the one on the mountain road are really in terrible shape. The one at Cobb Hill's not as bad because that one's kind of more out in the open, not under trees and...
That one could probably last for a couple more years.
But the one on Jones Brook and the one on the mountain road, something needs to be done or taken down.
Any feel for whether they're used or...
I don't think they're used, which is too bad.
Yeah.
We don't post anything on them. I post on Cobb Hill in the store.
Well, unless it's, um, you know, primary ballots or something like that. But as far as meeting agendas and stuff, we post them in the four places designated and that's it. I think it was a good idea at the time, but I don't think anyone uses it.
Okay, and, you know, now we have Front Porch Forum and so on too, so...
And the website.
Yeah.
So I would, I think they should be taken down.
Yeah.
So anyway, we would know if someone uses them?
I've never heard of any.
I think, I don't know if I have.
We could put something on Front Porch Forum before we take them down.
Well, that reaches the wrong group. That's reaching the people who are on Front Porch Forum.
I, yeah. I mean, only speaking about the one on Jones Brook, I think the location is not, is not good, you know? I think if we had a board there where people could pull in, rather than right by the bank, you know? Ideally, it'd be on the other side of the road, the Ruggles side, right before Ruggles. If we could somehow work out something there, I think it'd be more user-friendly. More user-friendly, possibly.
It would be more user-friendly.
Well, it might be, you might work at the bus stop too.
What's that?
Is there a bus stop there? Should come off Ward Brook too? Is there turnout for the bus stop?
Uh, you saw E2 bus?
No, no.
You saw E2 bus turns around there? Harwood bus turns around at Lynch Hill?
At Lynch Hill.
I would, you know, I would think we should take it down until it can find a better location. Rather than, they do, they're an eyesore right now.
If someone mentions it or gives a call, then you can rethink about that, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Right. How about this? This board will be taken down on this date. If you need this board, please call the town office app.
We could post something like that on.
Yeah, I saw that. If nobody notices, then...
New ones really? FYI, it's a new one, between 1300 and 2500, just FYI.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Morfest.
So, the PTO would like permission to have a beer tent at Morfest. It's town event, so it would be under the Town of Moretown. It would be our, it would be our name on the application fee. They would pay for everything. They would incur all the costs and get all the benefits. We've hired a sheriff already for the event. And the reason, one, the main reason they're asking is, one, a lot of people have asked us to do one. And two, the PTO needs a really quick, big moneymaker. Normally, they start the year, I'm on the PTO also. Normally, we start the year with enough money to run all the programs through a whole year. And this year, we have like 800 books. So we don't have enough money to run this year's programs, let alone time to make money for next year's programs. So that was why we were asking. And Morfest committee obviously said yes, and that we would ask the Select Board. The reason they're, they're not doing, they won't, we won't have our insurance in time to do it. Which is why we're asking for it to be under the Town of Moretown's name instead of the PTO's.
But the server has the liquor.
Yeah, the server has a liquor license, just like in any bar. The bartender's responsible. All of the, all of us have to be DCL certified, which you do online and get certified.
Same thing that happens for a wedding or something in the town hall. You know, the server, serving the liquor after wedding has to have a license.
Yep.
So the town has no liability?
Yes, right.
As long as the town has no liability. Because I know that's a touchy thing, like, if you do a BYOB wedding and anything happens, you're right out for that, that's on whoever it is. So it would have to be a certified person.
Yeah, the event is in Town of Moretown's name because it's a town event. But the PTO are the people serving it. They're the ones that will be certified to serve it.
Now, does the town events or insurance cover it?
Whether there's beer tents or not, it covers it.
Can you talk to the Morfest committee or the committee's gonna do that?
Yeah, I'm gonna have the Morfest committee. We're good with it. No, everyone, actually, it was Karen Sharpoff brought it up before. I even told them about the PTO. So it's not just the PTO wanting to do it.
So is it a controlled area?
Yes, it has.
So, yeah, okay.
That's my next question. If you say yes to this, I need to know if the road crew can come set up a snow fence for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the sheriff will monitor the...
Oh, yeah, and we, we've hired the sheriff department to be here regardless if there's...
So does any money from this go to Morfest?
No, it's a PTO fundraiser, which Morfest is funding.
Oh, okay. So Morfest does not want some haircut on this to help fund Morfest?
Nope. Everybody does. I mean, other people, Historical Society will do their own fundraiser at, at Morfest as well. It's the point of that. We don't wanna take their money. We raise money for ourselves. Just like if the fire department sold the corn, we wouldn't take anything from them either.
I talked to Tom earlier. I think that's why he was trying to call you guys. Is because the lady who left the board felt that he was okay with it.
Oh, okay.
I think that's probably why he was trying to call you and then...
He had said that to me last week on the topic side too.
Okay.
So then you can approve that by signing, by signing it.
That's the application the PTO will give me a check to send in with it. It's just a, it's a general festival permit for the Department of Liquor.
Okay.
And then is it okay to ask the road crew, even if they can just provide us with the snow fence, we can set it up? It'd be nice if they would set it up for us. Because it will be, it will sit on the backstop, so that will be one fence of it. And then it'll come around and have only one entrance and exit.
They're gonna be over here anyways, doing, helping set up all this stuff, aren't they? Aren't they? Did they help set up some other stuff before?
No.
But, yeah, they don't have a problem with that.
Hopefully, they would be here with the truck.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to her about that too. All right, thank you.
We have something more exciting than just the truck.
Yeah, a radiator, would you mind?
Any motion on that or is that okay?
No.
No, yeah.
I'm here with just a signature. I mean, if you wanted to...
Why don't we make it official? Sure. Good, you wanna move?
Sure.
I move that we approve the PTO's application for festival permit.
Second, Morfest. Second. Any more discussion on it? Want to favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Major issue. Any other new business?
Yeah, it's a fair, same kind of affair.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I just learned that today.
Same day as the Cambridge Fair.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, Saturday, that's right, Saturday.
So we're, I mean, we're gonna have a beer tent, yes, but ours is more geared towards families. And I think a Saturday night, to me, a Saturday night at the Cambridge Fair doesn't scream family entertainment. So I don't think I'd...
Definitely, Carol's never been to the Cambridge Fair. Come on.
Well, my parents wouldn't let me go when I was 15, 16, 17.
Well, one of, one of the things that were, are, one of the...
My parents were strict. I had to be invented a clarity lines in high school.
One of the, also, one of the new things Morfest is doing is Moretown Citizen of the Year. So the Select Board will be invited to come to Morfest to present that anyway.
Yeah, we can't be done.
I know, you have to talk mother that day.
All right. Michael still have the car show and all that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She, I think she already has, it's actually gonna be the, um, Haskins Memorial Car Show, the gentleman that owns Telephone. So it'll be, I think it's gonna continue as that as well.
Okay, no more new business? Oh, minutes? Minutes of July 16th.
I don't count here. Or no, that's a night.
You were here for the...
No. No.
No, you were here for the 16th. No, no, there's two, seven minutes that have to wait for...
Yeah, one of them's at 8:30.
Yeah, 8:30.
No, say 7:30. There's 7:30 and 7:16 that have to wait for.
Did you get the email letter sent on the 7th?
I did.
But I don't have to be here to...
No, you don't.
I'm making a motion for the minutes of 7:16.
Well, second, a discussion on those minutes? Want to favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And July 30th?
Same motion.
Aye.
Same, second. Any more discussion?
Yes, I've got some corrections to that. From the top, overruns is one word. Then in the section regarding the delinquent taxes, I wanted to change the wording there significantly. What I would like to have it say is Jason spoke about explicitly showing delinquent taxes in the tax rate formula, but the board chose not to do that, period. The Select Board's report will explain the moving pieces that go into the tax rate. Or I think I added, there was Tom Martin's suggestion and that I was fine with it, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the way you presented it?
So I think the way I emailed it to you was a little better, a little spicier.
Okay.
And finally, in the last paragraph, it is nominating clerks and treasurer, not treasures.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
Okay, so approved as amended?
Aye.
And like the second as amended, okay. Want to favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
So just for the record though, minutes are not verbatim.
Right, right. Now, the reason I made that correction is I think the sensitive is...
Well, I wrote in my minutes that you wanted to add a number. I mean, you specifically said that.
Yes, yes.
So I mean, you're, you're kind of just changing it to make it, I mean, you're not changing the meaning of it at all?
Adding a number is ambiguous in this case because it may mean adding...
That's what you said.
Wait, all right, it may mean adding money to the tax rate.
Okay.
Which is definitely not...
That's not being explained during the minutes.
Which definitely isn't what, that's why I...
So technically, it can't be changed because it wasn't said during the meeting. That's what I'm saying. It needs to reflect what's being said at the meeting, not what you remembered it changed to afterwards.
That is correct. Then, though, this is still a longer discussion. That's it. What's that? All right. Were folks okay with that? This isn't the most important?
Just for the future, yeah, I mean, just for the future, the minutes should reflect what was said at the meeting.
Right.
But you can add an addition, like you did, you know, for Tom added this, because that was said at the meeting.
Yeah, that, I agree, that should have been in there, but this is changing what you said at the meeting to something you didn't say at the meeting. But this is changing what you said at the meeting to something you didn't say at the meeting.
I can't say my recollection is that accurate, but...
I mean, I listened to it to make sure I didn't do it wrong.
Right.
Okay, so I would say to make it right, why don't we add that for tonight's minutes? Okay. So in other words, not change the wording, like you said, all the other changes, okay?
Yeah, the, yes.
And then Jason mentioned tonight, but this is what...
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the one minute.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
There you go. Got it.
It's no big deal, it's just the right thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Doesn't change that.
Right.
Just kind of defines.
Okay. Anything else? And let's sign, all right?
John, where are you going on vacation?
What's that?
Where are you going on vacation?
Oh, uh, meeting a rock.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
Beautiful.
Does she want to move?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Well, actually, we're meeting her sister-in-law. Her brother-in-law.
Nice.
We're going to meet them in Calgary and spend the whole time in it.
And how, is it company driving or a bus or?
No, we're flying from Montreal to Calgary and then riding a car going to the six national parks.
That's my idea of like something, yeah. It's going to be beautiful landscape.
My brother's going to fly with me. I'm going to drive all the way back.
Yeah.
I think he did, yeah. I didn't even think about it because it was two meetings, two months, that's about it, it's normal.
Yes, those people are buying the salvager.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Who's doing that?
GHR Enterprises in Bristol.
And it's also, by signing that, there's also a number of beers you're giving up to the board. The number is five?
Five, okay. So we all sign that. I'm signing the contract that has been signed by Stefan and Katrina. Listers, Errors and Omissions 2018 Grand List. They request approval to make the following changes to the 2018 Grand List under Errors and Omissions Title 32, Section 4261. And the parcel owner's name, is it Riti? Or is that supposed to be Rudy?
Rudy.
Rudy.
Yeah.
L. Cowan and Jordan Gonda, change in value from $0,000 to $100,000. Reason failed to enter data into Grand List.
There needs to be a discussion on that soon if you are thinking about bringing it to the rest of the board at all. Making it to Listers.
Right, did you, yeah, and is there any material we need or any proposal we should?
You would need an article to do away with the listers.
Right, but I think before we do that, we would need to know more about the cost, the new services, etc.
If, um...
That's it?
Yeah, I mean, if you bring that before the board, they're interested in it, we can certainly get you that information. What are the costs for?
Okay.
Before...
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking what were...